All right, let's, uh, let's get started. It is now seven ten. Uh, we'll commence the planning board of Dartmouth, uh, March eleventh meeting with a roll call vote. Uh, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Uh, Kevin Mello?
Present.
Margaret Sweet?
Present.
And Nick Psychopatis?
Present.
And Chris O'Neil is present. Uh, the first item on the agenda is actually a public hearing.
We're being recorded too, Chris.
And, and we are, yeah, every meeting is now being recorded from the beginning of the meetings. Uh, let's see, so process for the public hearing. Um, Christine, do we have a, um, well, first of all, let's, um, get a motion to end the, uh, regular meeting of the planning board and open a public hearing.
Make a motion that we open, oh, sorry, Margaret.
No, go ahead.
Take a motion that we open the public hearing following the closure of the planning board meeting, March eleventh.
I'll second.
Motion made by Nick Psychopatis, second by Margaret Sweet. Nick?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
And Chris O'Neil is yes. Um, Christine, do we have a legal notice for number one?
We, we do. It was, um, noticed on the board and in paper and all of those things. So you can waive that notice if you want to waive the reading of it unless you want me to read it in.
I'll take a motion to, uh, to waive the hearing, the reading of the public hearing. Motion to waive the reading. Motion made by Kevin Estes.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Kevin Mello. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Nick Psychopatis?
Yes.
And Chris O'Neil is yes. Uh, the item number one is from Eversource Scenic Roadway Request PSR twenty four dash one on the following roads, Gidley Road, uh, Gidley Town Road, Hicksville Road, Reed Road, North Hicksville Road, Collins Corner Road, Old Fall River Road, Horse Neck Road, and potentially all scenic roads if currently unscheduled work becomes necessary. Um, Christine?
So this is, um, something that we usually see yearly. We did not see any, um, anything last year, uh, because they were not working on the scenic roads. Um, we do have the representative from Eversource online. His name is Kyle Berry, and, um, he's going to speak to the, to the project tonight.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'll start, I try to start my video here. Oh, there we go. Uh, yes, so to reiterate, I'm here tonight as part of our tree pruning effort in town. Uh, we're on a recurring tree pruning cycle every four to five years. Any given road in town is pruned, and we have a number of scenic roads on the docket for this year that were just listed at the beginning of the meeting. And, uh, this is part of our safety and service reliability effort. We're always trying to keep on top of, uh, our reliability for our customers, mitigate any threats to the lines and threats to the public. And so this, this, uh, basic pruning is our, is our primary tool to do that. And, uh, so primarily, this is a pruning effort. I did include some language in there about cutting down brush up to four inch diameter. So we can discuss that if you're, if you're interested. Uh, it's not something I've pushed much in the past, but, uh, I'd, I'd like maybe the option to do that with, with tree warden approval probably. And, um, I guess with that, I can take any questions you may have.
Okay. Um, Christine, any, um, any questions from, from your office?
We did not receive any questions. I will tell you that, um, Kyle works with the tree ward, tree warden. The tree warden is Tim Barber from DPW.
Okay.
I do have a set of all of the, the plans in the office, um, for all streets. If anybody needs to look at it, but, um, you were given the management plan.
Mm-hmm. Um, Kyle, is, are there any, um, reasons why you don't usually include the brush?
It, I would ideally include the brush. So basically, if we have small trees and brush growing directly underneath the lines, our standard practice for many years has been just to cut the top off that tree, try to direct the growth away from the lines. But realistically, it always grows right back into the lines, straight back up, uh, where it came from. So, and the reason we haven't really cut it in the past is because I think, you know, some members of the, of the public in the board perhaps were, were concerned about removing trees, um, you know, without a, a specific hearing on specific trees, but it's, it's hard to mark small brush in advance for a, for a, a specific tree hearing. So.
Is there a, um, is there a, a, a height that you normally would use underneath the lines for brush itself, not just the trees?
It would be, so things we would target would be fast growing species that are, that are currently up, growing into the lines and likely to be back there again after we prune them. Uh, things like black locusts, black cherry, some of our oak and maple species, things that at maturity, they're very large trees and they just don't belong, uh, directly underneath the wire zone where they're going to be repeatedly uh, cut, cut back, pruned back at a minimum. So, uh, so those are kind of the things we would ideally target.
Okay. Uh, before I get to questions from the board, are there any, uh, anyone from, uh, on the public side that, uh, have any questions, concerns, uh, for Kyle or the, uh, the planning board itself? Uh, no one's, uh, no waiting areas again, right?
No, there are no waiting areas, and we seem to have lost Nick. Um, there is one person on that I don't recognize who it is. I'm assuming that the iPhone is Brian in preparation for, uh,
Okay.
I did receive a text from Nick saying that his internet gave out. He's trying to reboot right now.
Okay. All right, we'll continue on. Um, so hearing nothing from, uh, the public on this, uh, this open, uh, public hearing. Uh, any questions from the board members, concerns? Uh, Chris, I, I have a question for, uh, for the gentleman from Eversource.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when, when you say, uh, cutting of, of trees or, or cutting of brush, uh, are you, are you meaning wild grown brush? Or, uh, like I, I wouldn't want you to, to like cut down somebody's, uh, uh, like a, a hedgerow or a plant or something that, that was privately planted.
Correct. This would all be unmaintained woodland type area brush, and we, we do like to also contact via butter or homeowner, uh, before we do anything like that. So we're not looking to open up anyone's, uh, road screen or anything like that. It's just if we find that situation where it would be the best management practice from an arborist perspective, just to remove some of those, those small stems, uh, rather than keep topping them, we would contact that landowner that, that direct a butter and, and just see what their thoughts are. And, uh, so if, if we have your pre-approval to do that, then I can just go directly to that butter or landowner and, and, and cut it, you know, essentially on the spot.
Okay. I would, uh, I would, I would suggest that you, you make good effort to, uh, contact the, uh, the property owner, um, particularly if it's residential. Uh, I, I know firsthand that that doesn't, uh, has not always happened.
Yeah, we won't remove anything unless we get, you know, verbal contact with that, with that property owner.
Okay. If you could stick to that, that would be great by your contractors as well.
Sure.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other questions or concerns?
I have a question. Um, on the scenic road, there's a couple of, uh, trees that are dead, and their branches and they're dead are hanging over. Do you cut those trees down? Are you just cut the, the branches that are hanging over the wires? How do you handle that?
We would typically prune them away if there's some branches threatening the lines, but I'm, I'm definitely happy to remove completely. Again, I don't have a, a, a list in advance, but if you want to approve something like that in advance with, let's say I, I have to talk with the tree warden before we do any cutting of, of that nature, uh, I'd be very open to do that.
That would be great because there's a couple on scenic roads when I go by, but I see that the trees are completely dead and makes you a little bit nervous when you get these high winds like that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So what would we do? Talk, talk to the tree warden and he would call you?
And I, and I may be, you know, looking around myself and seeing these things. I'm often reviewing the crew's work and, uh, just generally driving through town. So if I see these, these trees in any of our maintenance areas, these obvious hazard trees, uh, I'll make notes. So I'll put together a list and I can, and contact the tree warden.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good point, Margaret. For members of the public that may see this meeting afterward, um, if there is a particular tree that's on the line, uh, that they may prune because it, uh, it's, it's past its best years and it's a concern, um, then you would have a little bit of time to get in touch with the DPW tree warden, Tim Barber, uh, in order to, uh, to raise concern about those and possibly, uh, have, uh, Eversource uh, look into not just trimming the dead portion of it. If the whole tree is in fact dead, they may help you, uh, remove it just in case, uh, it becomes a problem for the line down the road. Um, any other questions, concerns? Okay, uh, let me see. Given that, nothing from the public, I'll, um, I'll hear a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion, we close the public hearing and revert back to our regular, regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion by Kevin Mello, second by Margaret Sweet. Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Uh, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Psychopatis is not available right now. Chris O'Neil is yes. Um, so, uh, I would say, um, I will entertain a motion to, um, on this particular item.
I make a motion, we approve this item as written.
Uh, Kevin Mello makes the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Estes. Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Chris O'Neil and Nick Psychopatis is unavailable. So thank you, Kyle.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Now Christine, um, item number two on the agenda, that is also a public hearing?
That is correct. That is also a hearing.
So I could have, I could have left it open.
Yeah, you could, you, well, I mean, yes.
Yeah, okay, well.
I think we had to, we had to close it to vote on it.
Right, you had to close it to vote, so.
Right, okay. So. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to open again for item number two on the agenda.
So I'll make a motion to, to close the regular meeting of March eleventh, twenty twenty four, and open a public hearing for zoning articles for Springtown meeting.
Motion made by Kevin Mello is a second?
Some.
Uh, second by Margaret Sweet. Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Uh, Chris O'Neil is yes, Nick Psychopatis not available. Uh, this is item two, uh, zoning articles for Springtown meeting twenty twenty four. Articles A, B, C, D, and E. Uh, first article is the adoption of accessory dwelling unit bylaw. Second is the amendments to Article thirty, minimum lot area. Uh, C is amendments to Article thirty one, frontage. Uh, D amendments to Article thirty two, percentage of lot covered. And E is amendments to Article thirty three setbacks. Christine?
So you need to begin by, um, waiving the reading of the, of the, uh, legal ad by the clerk?
Yeah, motion. Anyone? Motion to waive the reading of the, uh, notice. Motion made by Kevin Estes, seconded by.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Kevin Mello. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Chris O'Neil is yes, and Nick Psychopatis still, uh, I'm gonna say unavailable on that one. Uh, Christine, go ahead.
Okay, so the first one is, um, the accessory dwelling units. You received a draft, um, of that article. Uh, town council is on a phone call into us. I'm assuming that is Brian on the iPhone. Is that correct, Brian? Um.
Muted if, if, if you.
Unmute, yeah.
Hi, Chris.
Hi.
No, it's actually, it's actually me, Mike Prenagakis.
Okay, thank you. Okay, mute back up. Um, so we do not have Brian yet. Um, uh, he was attending another meeting, so he was going to be doing this in the car, but I can get us started on it. So he had drafted up the, um, accessory dwelling unit bylaw. Um, we are going to have another public hearing on this, um, based on the feedback because there were still some questions, um, that we had outstanding with regard to this. So I'd like to propose that you schedule, um, an additional meeting, um, for, um, Monday, uh, uh, April first at seven PM to just do the, the, um, the zoning articles for town meeting. My reasoning for that, um, that date is because we're trying to do it before the election. Um, but I also need two weeks prior, I need to, to, um, advertise two weeks in advance. So I'd like you all first, I guess, to decide on that, if you'd like to vote on that piece of it. Um, again, it's a public hearing, uh, so.
Uh, so before, before we do that, um, given the information that is available, um, and on this, on these particular items, uh, since it is a public hearing and it was advertised, Christine, is a public hearing at this point, right?
That is, that is correct. Yes.
All right, so, uh, why don't we, um, why don't we see if there is anyone in the public purview that has any questions concerning any of these items right now? Uh, before we entertain a motion, uh, to continue this to the next, uh, to the April, to April first. That would be a special meeting, correct?
But that would be a special meeting, so I don't know if you want to just vote on the special meeting. I can take you through part of, I mean, Brian had some concerns, um, as he pointed out, uh, in the drafting of the actual article. There were a few things he wanted to, to go over. Um, I'm, I'm not sure if he'll be on, like he was supposed to be on, so maybe he's having trouble connecting as well.
Yeah.
Um.
So the question, really the question is, do we want to get into this right now? Um, to be honest with you, uh, these markups are a lot. I just got these a couple of days ago. I'd rather have a, a little bit more time to go through them. Um, but I, I, I will, um, I'll listen to the board members to find out, uh, if they have any particular issues that they'd like us to kind of sit on, uh, and read through, uh, for the April first meeting.
So Chris, um, I'm glad you, you mentioned that, um, on this accessory dwelling unit.
Yes.
I, I do have a, a sticking point.
Yep.
Um, currently, there is no site plan review required.
Mm-hmm.
And I would not support any article change that includes site plan review for every applicant. So I see that that's here. I know I've, I've voiced that sentiment before. Um, but it's here. Right now, we have, we are not requiring site plan review. We have smaller square footage. And if the change to larger square footage is going to require that the people give up that right um, and add this level uh, to their project, I would be in support of leaving the current bylaw as is.
Okay. We'll take note of that, Kevin, as we kind of get a little bit deeper into this.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, any other concerns?
I have a question too. Um, when we were discussing this, uh, the last time, which was a good, good meeting, we were saying that everything had to be attached, uh, which I still feel very strongly about. But currently, I believe if you've got a, let's say you have a, um, a bond that you're no longer using and it's detached and it was built prior to two thousand and six, how does the board feel about if that was to be a detached AUD? And that would of course would be the only AUD on the site. I don't know how the board feels about that.
I, I believe we had come to the agreement that we would leave the current verbiage as it was. So if it was built, if it was built prior to nineteen, whatever it was, whatever year it was, two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six. But I didn't see it here. That's why I mentioned it, Kevin.
Okay, good point, though. I didn't pick up on that. So yes, that, that is missing from this draft.
Yes, it is. So that's the only thing that, uh, I really had. I mean, I have questions, but it certainly can wait till, uh, April first.
Yep.
What I would recommend is over the, um, next week or so, if you get me your questions, um, in advance, so Brian can have uh, responses to those prepared, um, in advance, because we don't want to have any stumbling, stumbling points at the, uh, on the, the first, um, that would be good, so that I can then get him to, to, I can get them to him. Um, and I know that in his markup, he had asked a couple of questions in particular, um. One of the, let me see, I'll start at the beginning here. I'm sorry, I wasn't.
The, the other thing too is I believe Chris had said a maximum of eleven hundred square feet.
I thought it was a thousand.
I thought, I thought it was a thousand.
It was a thousand.
Okay.
That's what's in here, right?
That's what's in here, yes.
Quick question while we're waiting. Um, where did we include site plan? And where did that language come from? Because I don't remember that. Or was that just a formality, Christine? Regarding the.
This is Brian now. Um, so some of these things came from the draft. We were looking at the, um, the wear him, I mean, uh, rent them draft for starters. Um, so that might have been where that had come from. Hi, Brian, this is Christine. Can you hear us? Not yet. Um, he, going down the thing, um, until he gets, Brian?
Can you hear me now?
Yep, that's fabulous. So we just started and they were just starting to ask a couple of questions. Um, they, they, um, have discussed a concern with the site plan review, um, piece of it. They don't want to have that component or they wanted to know where it came from.
It came from the, the, the notes. Uh, I received.
You're broken. You're broken up.
Uh, the survey.
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
You want to have some type of, uh, not special permit, but some type of site plan review. All right, let, let, let me, um, let me, uh, zoom back in, in a, in a minute.
Okay. Um, so just.
While we're wait, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Um, just to, uh, um, to continue here, Brian, one of Brian's comments was you may want to have a backup or an article in case this one, um, does not pass or if it fails, um.
Well, wouldn't the backup be just to leave it alone?
Well, that's the, that's the second comment he's got down on here. I guess that, that would be a possibility, but the backup.
Because this, this is one.
Would keep the existing accessory departments, uh, accessory apartments. So he's saying, he's basically saying that you would want to keep the other one and not, and not, uh, have nothing.
Correct, so.
Yeah, the intent is not to, you know.
This article specifically says to delete, so if it gets voted down, it will not delete, therefore it will be still in force.
Correct. Yeah, in, in the intent is not to have it fail. Uh, the intent is to get something.
No, no, we, we hope it doesn't fail, but, you know, this is only one article to delete the old and increase in, in, add the new.
Right.
So if this article fails, then the old doesn't get deleted and we carry on status quo.
Right. Can, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Better. Okay. So, so I actually heard that conversation. So the, what I'm saying there is, um, I don't know if Christine advised you, but, um, when the, um, when the table, use table got passed, somehow in that use table, it says that accessory apartments are allowed in every district. Which is, which is not the intent. It's supposed to just be in the residential districts. So the use table is incorrect. And so what I'm saying is if for some reason, all your major revisions to ADUs fails, I think there's, you might, you might still want a backup article to make sure that the use table is corrected to reflect where the accessory apartments are supposed to be.
I, I have some concern with that because that's going to confuse the floor and maybe get everything deleted, uh, voted against.
Um, so that, that was what that comment was about. Um, in terms of the site plan review, what I was saying is in your, um, in your, uh, uh, survey that I was provided, it indicated that some type of, you didn't want a special permit process, but you guys were thinking about some type of site plan review to ensure that architectural features of the, uh, ADUs were able to be reviewed by you. If that's not something you want anymore, that's easy to take out, but that's, I didn't, I, I created that based on notes I had, not off the top of my own head.
Yeah, that, that's certainly not, was not our intent, I'm not, uh, my intent, um.
No, I think, I think what we had discussed, Brian, was some type of language, uh, in the bylaw. Uh, I'm trying to look at my notes. Um, in order to give direction, I guess, and, and provide intent for the architectural design.
Um, so, so sure. So just to be aware, if you don't do that through site plan review, as a right site plan review, not, not where lie, you can deny it, but where it's just a review, then you're putting it on the building and, uh, commissioner to make that call.
Correct.
As a zoning enforcement matter. So, so that's, that, I just want you to be aware of that. It would be outside of your control. You would be hoping the CEO would effectively ensure that those architectural standards are, are, are adhered to.
But we don't, we don't have architectural standards for homes. We have that for business, which I agree with. But i- if somebody wants to put up a ultra contemporary home on their property, even if it's amongst Colonials and Capes, that's their right as a landowner.
So. So, so there's a middle ground there, which is you don't worry about architectural standards from a style perspective, but you still do some type of review to ensure that, you know, for example, they are making it look like a single building. As opposed to, uh, you know, you want it to look like it's, that it's all still a single family home, because I assume that's. Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think the point is that Brian was trying to say, echo our intent that, that whatever, it's not so much that we're legislating the, uh, an architectural standard for the primary dwelling. We're just saying that the, the ADU should be consistent with whatever the primary dwelling is.
And I wouldn't mind that.
That's exactly what I had brought up, consistent with. I mean, if it's a matter of right, we have to preserve the integrity, I think, of the phraseology matter of right. And I think as adults and engineers and architects being professionals, if we say consistent with, and we define that a little bit further, and they maintain some sense of consistent with, then it's up to us to determine if we want to practice this particular subject for the benefit of the people of the town without detriment to the town, or if we want to practice on behalf of the town and impose some amount of detriment to the people or not. I just want to be careful what by matter of right means and how much consistent with could work for us in this application. That's my position on it.
So the way it works with site plan review is there's no deciding whether or not they get to do it. All you would be doing is deciding whether or not the way in which they want to do it, uh, works from an integration perspective. So the only question is, do you want you as the board or do you want the CEO deciding whether or not they sufficiently made it look like one single family homeowner? That, that's, that's really what you have to decide. Who's going to be making that determination?
I'll just say if our definition is defined enough, I think the CEO will have the authority to determine if it complies with the definition. Do we really want all of these to come before us? Is it really necessary or is it overreaching on our behalf? I feel like if we're struggling to come up with a bylaw and define it well and work for the people and respect the town, then the CEO can see that it's applicable.
Yeah, I think that was the consensus at the last meeting also.
Yeah, I, I don't want to add the level of complexity to make every applicant come before the planning board.
Sure, that's not a problem.
I don't want to do something for the better of the people, but yet take something away or, or, or do a little bit of a control grab just because I, I feel like the language itself should be. I, I feel like the language itself should be sufficient, or to perform in the way that we're defining it.
So then I think, so, so I think it's easy, from the perspective of if they're going to expand the existing single family, that's easy, you just have language that essentially says, you know, you have to make sure it still looks like a single family. The things that you're going to have to focus on are, if they, if they're, if it's like a semi-detached structure where you're allowing them to use some type of breezeway to connect, do you want to make sure that, that, that attached secondary structure has to look like a barn or a garage, or can it, like, does it have, what is, what is the context for what that secondary attached structure is supposed to look like? Are you still trying to look?
Uh, consistent with the existing house, with the, the existing
The style.
Structure of the existing house. So, if you have a contemporary home.
Right.
Oh, so I, I apologize, I, I'm not, I'm not worried, like, my concern at this point is not about the architectural style, it's about, do you want, do you want them to make sure or not? That the secondary attached structure looks like it's a garage, or it looks like it's a barn, or do you care if it looks essentially like two units connected by some type of intermediary structure?
I think consistent with the primary dwelling will reveal or produce a product that looks similar in nature, i.e. it looked like a single family beforehand, it still looks like a single family after it's done. I mean, isn't that kind of where we ended up?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, I mean, we can't, we can't really say it must look like a barn, it must look like a garage.
What if some, here's a good question, actually, it could, but here's a question.
But it's got to be consistent.
Exactly. It could, but it doesn't have to.
What would we do as a board if an applicant came before us in site plan review? They've got an eighteen hundred square foot ranch, single car garage, the vinyl is forty years old, and they want to put the ADU on, and they love the natural cedar shingle, and they got the budget to do that now, and their hope is to wrap the rest of the house in new cedar over the next year or two. What would we do at site plan review to that, that might complicate or compromise that homeowner moving forward with their ADU? Would we strong arm, strong arm them and say no?
No, I don't believe so, I believe we'd say yes. I mean, you have plenty of houses that have siding on one side, it's separate, different kind of siding, and on the other three sides, they have, you know.
I, I agree with you, I'm only, I'm only presenting it because.
No, I know, but that's what I'm saying.
So, I think if you want to simply say it has to be consistent with the existing structure to maintain the appearance of a single family uh, structure, I think that's sufficient, except for, do you want to be explicit about where any entrance for the ADU has to be? Can it be on the front, does it need to be on the side, in the back? Because that's not something that, that need, that the CEO could in the discretion figure out, I think you need to specify whether you have an opinion on that.
I, I think that's micromanaging, and, and it varies by property.
Well, so many homes have two front doors, the main door, and then the door to a mudroom or something happens to be on the front, I, I, I wouldn't I wouldn't be in support of a definition that defines where the door has to go or the entrance.
No, my, my point was, if you have a preference about where it should go, it should be in the bylaw.
I don't think we have a preference.
Okay.
I mean, in all fairness, if their driveway only approaches the facade that faces the street, and this is being built for mom or dad and their elderly, putting the door on the side with five steps where you know the wheelchair is going to have to go in and out with an ambulance call, is bizarre. I, I'm, I'm free to leave that up to the homeowner, and whoever's designing it.
I agree, Nick.
Great.
Next, next question is, do you want it to, do you want them to have to make it look like like, it's a single driveway with a single parking area, can there be separate parking areas, do you care about that at all?
I'd like to see.
Would you care if there was a single family house that had, that had two parking areas essentially, is that, is that fine for you, or do they have to really conform to the single family idea of there's one driveway, one parking area?
Well, I'd like to see one driveway, one parking area.
But there's so many ways to do that, right, can't we, can't we define the fact that if the original driveway is connected by, you know, to the new driveway, some, for instance, there's a horseshoe with a parking square, but there's ways of having contiguous asphalt, I think contiguous needs to be implied somehow. Or else you are making it look like multiple units.
Right. It has to be.
Trying to avoid.
Be one, one parking. That's my feeling.
I think that more than one driveway entrance from a street or something like that, I think DPW would automatically be involved, or they would have to be out, because they don't want them too close together.
But, yeah, I, I, I don't think we want two entrances.
Right.
I think we're talking about, do we extend the end of a single entrance to reach out to the, the ADU?
Right, like, for, like, for example, if, if they put the ADU entrance in the rear, would the driveway continue around back and there's a secondary parking area? Like, would that be acceptable as, as a, as a concept? Or do you want to literally look like it's one driveway going up to the house with one parking area? There's no right or wrong answer here, but if you have a preference, if you don't care, then you don't need to put it in, but if you have a preference, you should definitely put it in.
Well, I'd like to see one driveway.
And one parking area.
Right, and one parking area. Because then it's, you're getting involved in lot coverage too, if you stop putting parking lots in the back.
Go next, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking of some of the examples that I, I've seen in town, one, one recent one was a, a simple extension off the right side of the house to a driveway that was there. It was extended about fifteen to twenty feet for two vehicles for the ADU. Another was a, a barn that was built prior to two thousand and six, that was rehabbed into a good sized apartment, and, and that one came off of the existing and just made it a contiguous run to that particular unit. So, I mean, these are good, these are good questions, kind of to ponder, Ryan. Christine, I, I think maybe a good idea, I, I don't know if there's someone in the building department now that our, our CEO, if we could have them maybe attend the next meeting, just to kind of flesh out some of these ideas and see what they see in the field. I can't think of anything that would be so egregious as far as parking goes, and the architectural design of the addition versus this, the the, the current house that, that's so non-consistent for the ones that I've seen anyway, I, I can't imagine that you would spend, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on an addition, two hundred thousand today, for a thousand square feet. And, you know, I'd have it look nice. So, I'm sure there are examples. I, I think maybe incorporating some of the suggestions from the building inspector would be, would be probably a good idea before we finalize things, what do you think? No? I, I think particularly if we're going to put this into the zoning enforcement officer, we should have some feedback. Margaret, you've got something in your mind.
I, I just want to make sure that we can get someone here on the, the next meeting, April first.
I don't, I don't know that we have anybody available.
Right. That, that's the question.
I could maybe get somebody from DPW or something like that, maybe, but.
Okay, so as a compromise, if, if you don't think we can get somebody here, that's fine. But let, let's try and reach out to the building department to bring that particular, those two particular issues to their attention, and see if we can get at least some feedback on it. I think we're all basically on the same page with this, I don't, I don't think we're going to find anything that's, that's really an outlier, but you never know, you know.
Can I make one comment?
Yep.
I, I think based on the amount of square footage we're adding, and based on the fact that we have a bedroom limitation, we can somewhat deduct the fact that we're really not allowing more than two more vehicles, which we know needs X amount of asphalt. So what if we just expand this a little bit and include a calculation for square footage of asphalt that can be added but not exceeded, based on the ADU? This way, any and all requests for asphalt that are directly related to the ADU are directly related to what is necessary for two more vehicles. And to, to decrease the amount of interpretation and requests outside of that.
My, my first impression of that, Nick, is that it's, it's just, it seems a bit too cumbersome. And if we're, if really the intent is to loosen things up a little bit, and give this as an, as of right, the, the less we can incorporate some of those requirements, if you will, the better. If the goal, if the ultimate goal is to try and drive some of these permits into town.
So that, that's fine, I was, I was just, you know, working backwards, basically thinking, I don't need someone to ask me for five thousand square feet of asphalt when they're only adding one vehicle to the property because of the ADU they're building. So, I, I, I'm okay either way, I was just trying to come up more or less with a calculatory way of saying, per the ADU, this is the additional asphalt.
Yeah, and the factor means it's not cheap, so i- if, you know, the, the the building department knows that they need two spaces, I'm sure they can work it out off of the existing uh, drive, but.
And, and don't forget, you know, I, I'm not totally opposed to that. If it did not work, let's say the garage is staying, the ADU unit's going on the opposite end of the house, opposite side, if they can't figure it out, they do always have ZBA for a hardship like this. And, and this could be, you know, not that I want to add that level, but I think the, the number of cases you may see, one in every five years, where they can't do it, well, that's, that's a hardship to me, based on their land and their current home structure. And, and yes, maybe that one person, every five years, may have to ask the ZBA for some relief to this. So I'm, I'm not, not opposed to it.
What are the sections, Christine?
Uh, Brian, they had talked about, I don't know if you had heard when you first got on, about the attached versus the detached. Can you hear me now?
Uh, no, I did not hear that part.
Okay, so there was some discussion about the attached versus detached, and the only thing they wanted to make sure was that they had for detached that were in place prior to two thousand and six, they want, they were okay with that verbiage staying in place.
Okay, so, I mean, at this point, you know, any detached or in existence, as of the date that you at the, this bylaw gets updated by town meeting, would all be grandfathered in. So, by having that verbiage in, what you would be doing is it wouldn't be grandfathered, it would actually be allowed, which means they could adjust it without having to get um, ZBA sign off for a, a change to a grandfathered use. So I just want to be clear is passing this bylaw doesn't mean that anyone with a detached ADU has to tear them down. But if you add extra language, you're granting them additional rights for those ADUs, which would otherwise no longer be conforming, so I just want to make sure I understand what it is that you're looking to do.
Uh, we're trying to keep to the two thousand and six that's in the current bylaw.
Okay, so that language, I, I, what I'm gonna, I'm gonna check, because I want to make sure that language doesn't there, that there's an inconsistency now with it based upon what you want to revise, so we may need to tweak it, but I'll take a look at it. Okay, and, and, and in general, just so you're aware, a lot of these choices aren't simply that they're choices. You know, whatever it is you guys want to see, for the most part, I can put into paper. There's very little here that I would say, yes, you have to do this, or no, you can't do this. So by no means look at what I provide you as you have to do this, it was suggestions based upon the feedback I had been given, and if you want to change it, it's absolutely fine if you want to change it.
So the next comment down that you have is, if they were going to take out articles thirty through thirty-three, we discussed today that I had done some minor modifications based upon the comments we received, so we will not be taking those out of the bylaw.
Okay, alright, that's fine.
That solves that one. The next thing you have down is the purpose, and you have policy statements here.
Yeah. So, my only, my only, my comment on the purposes is, make sure you really like what they are, because courts may, that, that's what a court's going to rely on to interpret it. And so, just be aware of unintended effects you could have if it is either too limiting or too broad, and a court might decide to interpret your bylaw differently than you intended, so I guess what I always say is, purpose sections should be there for a purpose, pun is intended, and it shouldn't simply be some aspirational language, it should be utilized to help people understand what the bylaw is intending to be. And, and help get at the underlying ways in which it should be looked at and enforced in interpretation. Uh, so that's all, there's no right or wrong answer, I just want to make sure that's what you're thinking of when you have those purposes drafted.
Okay.
Okay, the next comment down that you had was with regard to the the ratio requirement, a maximum of one thousand square heat, square feet of habitable gross area.
Yeah, did you, a lot of towns do this, including Rantham, which is kind of what you guys are looking at, do you want an alternative minimum? Is the ratio between the ADU and the structure, so for example, if they have a fifteen hundred square foot cape, do you want them to be able to have a thousand foot ADU?
Yeah, I, I think, I think our intent was to keep it at a thousand, no matter the size of the house, because uh, the ADU we're anticipating would be used for for elderly, for those with medical issues initially, in legitimate habitable space, so. There was no.
Again, there's no Okay, there's no right or wrong, I brought it up only because Rantham's had it, and I wanted to make sure weren't trying to port that over from, from their version as well.
And, and that's correct, members of the board, correct?
Yes, I'm fine.
It is, as long as the square footage, the lot coverage, where would we have to put maximum lot coverage, or is that?
Lot coverage is, lot, lot coverage, at least from what I was provided, is whatever the underlying zoning district is, and so it's treated no different than a single family home. If they meet the lot coverage, they meet the lot coverage, but there's no different number, just because they've had ADU on.
So if the lot coverage for a particular one is only seven hundred square feet, they can build it, but it would have to stay at seven hundred square feet?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and I, I forgot how we settled on this, does that square footage include or not include uh, the, the square footage for the, the breezeway that uh, or, or some type of connecting?
Includes.
Yeah, this is gross.
Yeah, we left it at boots.
Yeah, I thought we left it. So if that is inclusive, then I think we should make that explicit, because I, I think there will be misunderstandings and disputes if that's not made explicitly clear.
Right, I think you're right, Brian, you should, you should write that language in there.
You mean an eleven hundred square foot entryway? And, and a thousand.
Well, I mean, you do have a limit in terms, I think it's a, it's a percentage of, but the point is, if you want that breezeway to count as part of the square footage of the ADU, then you need to be explicit about that, or you're going to get disputes between the CEO and the homeowners.
So right here, where it says maximum a thousand square feet, should we just put include in any connections or including breezeway, or?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, if it's just gross and it's not habitable, I mean, it's, it's gross, right, period, the end, that's the project.
Well, you and I understand that, but.
But someone might say, but it's not my ADU, it's what's connecting the ADU to the house, it's not the ADU, like, that, you I can envision an attorney trying to play with that, so my job, this is where my job is to tell you what I would do if I was on the other side, and how to stop that.
So inclusive of entryways, breezeways.
Connections.
Connections.
Well, we all know that there is a property like that that has an enormous breezeway to connect to me to you.
But it does kind of look nice. I, I gotta tell you.
But it's big. So the next comment down is, um. With regard to, uh. Spring twenty, twenty-four town meeting date accounts for a change in definition. Otherwise, someone might try to argue that they can have an ADU in addition to a detached accessory apartment. In an accessory structure. You're breaking up again.
Yes.
Nope, we're struggling with you, Brian.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I, oh, how's that?
Yep, that's good.
Yeah, yeah. So I can, so this, this phone call is basically telling us where there should be cell towers. Um. So. The, the issue is, is that, um, I don't, because you're redefining. What an ADU, the old accessory apartment definition allowed. Detached structures and your new ADU definition does not. So you need to be clear. From a perspective of what an ADU is, includes any detached structures that were built before. The new bylaw went into effect. And that way someone can't lay, because you have a one limit on ADUs. You can have one on a property. But you don't want someone coming in and saying, no, that detached structure is actually an old accessory apartment. It's not ADU, so I can still get my one ADU as well. So you need to define ADU to include any of the old detached structures. That you can't do anymore, but you could, you were allowed to do at one point. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Right, but we want to continue to allow them.
The existing ones will continue to be allowed, but they also count as the one ADU on the property. That's what you want to make clear, right?
But what I want to make clear is that if, um, somebody has a garage on their property that's detached, that was built in nineteen twenty. They still could come, they still could come to town hall, buy right, fill out a building permit to turn that into an ADU.
Okay, so that is different than the notes I was provided, which is that no new detached. ADUs are allowed. What you are now saying is you can't build a new detached structure, but any existing attached structure. Detached structure can become an ADU. Is that what I'm hearing?
If it was built prior to two thousand and six.
Okay.
If the detached structure was, so essentially the first, that our current bylaw, I believe. Came into effect in two thousand and six. And that's when the ZBA, the, the planning department said, well. If you already have a detached building built prior to two thousand and six. We will allow you to make it an ADU. But we won't let somebody start in after two thousand and six, build a detached ADU. So we want to, this board wants to carry on that.
Okay.
I, I don't want to say grandfather, but that legacy.
No, it's, it's not grandfathering. It's actually, it's, it's making it lawful. It's different. And so that's fine. Um, we're, that's, that's an easy thing to, to tweak. The one thing I'd want to know is, um. What if it's a newer detached structure? That then they attach with a breezeway.
Well, then i- if, if they can, sure, why not? Then it's not detached.
Sure. So, but I want, I want to be clear is that just because. It was built after two thousand and six, doesn't mean they can't do something with it. They don't have to build a new structure. They can use an existing structure that was after two thousand and six, as long as they attach it.
As long as when they're done and they get their occupancy permit, it's attached. In, in, in a way that's consistent with the primary dwelling, then we'd be okay.
With a gross square footage of no greater than a thousand square feet.
Exactly. Gross, that's right. So.
Gross, right.
A ten by, uh, four, four foot wide, ten foot long breezeway will come off of. The living area. If that's what it took to, to attach it.
And plus there's only one ADU per, per lot. That's it, just one.
Real, can I just ask a quick question based on everything we just said? Kevin, so are you implying that if there is. By matter of definition, an existing accessory dwelling unit? I'm sorry, um. Help me out here. Not an ADU, but a, um.
Accessory apartment, an accessory apartment is what it's called currently.
The accessory. So it's a barn in the backyard. It was prior to oh six, they converted it, it conformed, and now we have an ADU statute. Can they add an ADU to the primary house or is it?
No, but the way I want to make sure that that's the case is I wanted to find ADU to be inclusive of any of those.
Right.
Correct. So that, oh, anything that was defined as an accessory apartment before is now an ADU.
Understood.
Right, right.
I don't want anyone getting sneaky and trying to claim that that's an accessory apartment and now this is my ADU.
Right.
And then, and the primary house can have an accessory dwelling and then that house can have one also.
Yes, and it's a nesting doll of ADUs.
The next few comments have to do with, um, occupancy, um, family members, that type of thing.
Yeah, so, um. You know, you guys seem like you were sort of not clear. You hadn't narrowed down exactly what you want yet. So if it was going to be family members only, I provided a suggestion in terms of scope. You could completely change that. This is not a requirement at all. Um, I think I also had a suggestion of, you know, if you're considering this to be for like assisted care of some type. You know, would you want it to be the situation where, um, rather than it being. The grandmother living in the ADU, getting help from the family, it's actually the grandmother still staying in her house and the ADU has the nurse living full time. For example.
Yeah, and I, I, I believe the, um, the consensus was last time, and correct me if I'm wrong. But we, as, because we're trying to get this as close to an as of right use. Uh, that we. Focus more on. The term of rental than we do. The occupants. Um, because. If there were family members initially. And grandmother passes away. I, I personally don't think we need. To have the restriction of family only. What say you?
Be careful that we don't put anything in writing that none of us are going to police and neither can the town.
I agree with that, yeah.
So, and in that respect, I would say, I, I would urge if you are considering it being a family only thing. Or somehow restrictive on not how long it's rented, but who gets to rent it? Or occupy it, that. That's when you should probably go more towards a special permit route. That the special permit expires every few years and they come back up for renewal and you can really police. Very closely who is going to be living there.
Yeah, I, I think Brian, the, the consensus was basically, you know, we, we don't want something that has to be policed. Uh, the town has enough to do, uh, the intent is there. We want to, we, I guess. That if the focus is going to be somewhere, the focus should be on the intent of what we're trying to do with this, uh, and then take the buffers off.
Let me just, let me play devil's advocate. What about if, if someone does have an ADU? And they live near a college, our college that we have here. And, um, they can, uh. Have three college students in there. And do we want, we had a lot of problems a couple of years ago, ten, twenty, fifteen years ago with college students. So we have to be kind of careful and we have to think about that too.
Yeah, I, I think, um. Uh, the first thing that comes to mind, Margaret, is that the, uh, the, the. Residents at UMass back then. Was in, it was an issue, but there was a lack of housing at UMass. Uh, there were additional units built. I, I think there's. Less of that in town. I might, correct me if I'm wrong, Christine, but that's the way it seems to me anyway, I should say. But, uh, one of the comments that we had at the last meeting was, well. I just, you know, if I'm living there. And this is a rental for me, uh, because my grandmother passed away. Um, I'm going to be a heck of a lot more careful about. Uh, who I'm renting to and for what period of time. And, and if we're using it to, uh, to augment the value of the house, we're, we're using it to. Build the trades or a building, we're using it to, um, allow additional income for. The people that are doing these, these units, then, um, you know, it's, they're not cheap. Um, so they, they may have, you know, they will have students in them, you know, let's not kid ourselves.
So, uh, one, if, if you're, if. One way to impact. Who it gets rented to. Um, without having to police it in detail would be to only allow them to be one bedroom. Because, you know, you're not going to have three unrelated people living in a one bedroom.
Right, but Brian, one thing that we're trying to cover, everyone here is so focused on grandma moving in next door. Um, what about, you know, grandma or grandpa are living in the house, their daughter and, um, grandchildren. You know, get divorced, the daughter gets divorced and needs a place to live, so she's living there with. Her grandchild. So it's, you know, three generations.
Absolutely. And so my only point is there are trade offs between, you know. The more you try to allow for certain additional situations that you want to account for, the more your likelihood to allow situations that you don't want as well. And that's just, you got, you got to decide what, what it is you want.
Well, I think.
Policy call.
At one point, and, and I know of a house that doesn't fit this description, but at one point, we had said. That the. Owner of the house must occupy one of the two units.
Right.
I, I believe we had, we had discussed that. So by doing that, you're, you know. If I get a bunch of partiers next door and you're the homeowner, that's it. You're going to stop for eviction right away. So I think that's how we decided that, that we would police this.
Sure, yeah. No, and again, there's no right or wrong answer here. There is just trade offs.
Right, right. I mean, the pro- the problem is, is at this point, we can solve problems, but. I want to solve the problems without going too far into a police state. And this is the time to try to. You know, take care of potential problems down the road. I don't want to make it so easy that we run into problems.
Does the, how does the, how do you guys like the language that I put in terms of? Um, delineating between, you know, short-term rentals versus occupants. More clear, um, were you concerned about, is it, is it? Cause I guess my question is, is it about you want not to be like a vacation rental, like someone Airbnb's, you want it to be actual someone's residence?
Correct.
Okay, so then I'm not sure thirty-one days is really going to help you there. I think you need to. Be explicit that whoever is renting the unit, that has to be their residence. And not simply, you know, they're here for six weeks for a business trip or something.
I want to be careful with that. The, the, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you, Margaret?
No, go ahead.
I, I want to be very, very careful with that because. Doing such is almost as if we know what's going to happen in the future and we're forecasting the purpose and the utilization of the ADU. In what a homeowner can or can't do, I. I don't want to expand on it much more than I just did, but I really want to exercise caution on this subject.
I think that any ADU that's attached to a house has to be. A residence for that person that's living in there. Uh, and not, uh. And not just a rental for thirty days or thirty-one days. If someone's going to live in that ADU, then. They should live in there. My, my feeling is for at least a year, you know, it should be a residence, somebody that's gonna. Live in a home, make it a home for themselves.
I don't necessarily have a good example to share with you, but I have one. It's not the best example. Grandparents are still living in the house. They built the ADU just in case. Maybe it's the daughter that's divorced. The, the story goes on, but, um. June comes around and they go back to the old country for six months. And while they're there, because South Dartmouth is what it is, they could get three or four months rent out of their ADU or their home. Do they do it behind our backs? Do they do it hush, hush? Or do they do it transparently, list it for rent? Call Margaret or call another broker and next thing you know, it's available. Is it something we want them to be able to do? Or absolutely not. I, I understand the concern, but I also understand, or at least can see. How somebody may benefit from some income along the way, um. And again, will it be policed one way or the other? I don't know. I'm just, I'm just trying to vent and share the fact that there are some good, there are some good natured. Short-term rental situations that are not only good for the homeowners. That also would not be a detriment to the town or the services of the town. That's all.
Well, I think, I think in this draft, it does say that, you know, you know. That the owner of the house has to live in one of the two places, either the ADU or the, or the residence.
No, that's fair, but, but the fact that the, let's say we are, let's say I am the owner and I'm occupying my twenty-one hundred square foot ranch. And my ADU has been empty because my kid left for college and started their own life. And I'm going back to Greece for the summer. Should I not be able to get three or four or five months of South Dartmouth rent out of my ADU? Is, is it, is that going to be allowable or not? It's not a family member and it's not a long-term rental.
Yeah, I, I think the consensus was last time that, um, as long as we avoid the. Uh, the stories of short-term rentals, um, you know, weekends, one weekend at a time. Um, then we've done basically all we can when it comes to rental of the unit.
Okay, that's fine. As long as it's, everyone's clear that it's about length of time and not whether it's residence or not. That, again, that's just, I want to be clear on what should be in the draft, that's all.
So where are we with that, Brian? Real quick, while you're saying length of time, what are we going to use?
So right now it's drafted as it has to be at least thirty-one days. Um, that was what I received before, um, and I think we just, it needs to be clear that it's, uh, that. Residency is not a requirement. Um, because again, none of these are right or wrong and questions and answers. I don't have a preference. But like, there are situations where I do think. Um, if you have a position, then we should be clear on it, so there's no confusion later. Or maybe the CEO ends up interpreting it in a way that you hadn't intended. So, um, if you don't intend on occupancy being, uh, uh, for residency purposes being a requirement. I think that should be explicitly stated.
Yeah, I think, I, I think we have more control in this scenario than we have for even some single families, say in Nonquit where. You know, they'll, they'll rent for two weeks. Uh, they happen to be single families, so we have no control over it.
But what happens with this thirty-one days that we're, we're implying that we have control? So, um, thirty, thirty-one days on Elm Street. In, um, in August is six thousand dollars. Um, thirty-one days on Elm Street in January is three thousand dollars. And somehow the person that got it in August paid X, which is. In other words, are we going to police this? Are we, are we? Are we really certain that what we're doing is objective in nature and it's going to matter? Or does it need to be longer?
Well, so this is why I raised the, the idea of, um. Residency is an easy thing to police because it's not hard to see if someone has listed that as their address. That, that's, that's easy. So, um. How, how can, how effective will, uh, enforcement of thirty-one days be? I honestly can't tell you. You know, I think it would, might be the case is if someone's consistently renting out. Week over week and it's on Airbnb. It's going to get noticed.
Sure.
So, so that, that begs the question, um, Brian. What kind of teeth does a CEO have? Um, with, with either, with this or any other section of the bylaw where there are some. Penalties to be borne by, by someone.
So, well, for example, if you're listing it for, oh, for one weekend at a time on. Airbnb or Burbo, um, you know. He can issue three hundred dollar tickets for a day for zoning violation. Um, we can go seek injunctive relief. Um we can go seek injunctive relief if we need to.
Are we successful at, at any of those now?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I've absolutely done injunctions of multiple, you know.
Lost again, I heard yes.
Where uh there was uh on um that the property, where, where there was the variance and then in exchange of the variance, they had to give the um, the large lot uh to town. Um except, is that Brady Estates, I think that was Brady Estates, um refused to. Uh last year I went and got injunctive relief and got a court order to force them to hand it over because it was a violation of the variance conditions. So, you know, getting uh zoning enforcement through uh spirit court is, is definitely something we do, I mean, we don't do it all the time, but it's not infrequent, um typically just getting some non criminal fines um is sufficient.
All right, so, so that, that kind of lends itself to Margaret's concern about those college students. And um if there are, or, you know, or, or the other concern about having these short term rentals that are, you know, a little bit more rowdy, maybe the initial owner and the, the owner of the larger home uh is elderly and they're not gonna get involved, they're just gonna get the rent and hopefully they go away. Um but as long as the town does have an alternative.
Well, so nothing in your bylaw right now would prevent a long term rental to free, i- i- unless you keep the family part of it, then they could rent to three college kids potentially. So that's, you know, that's where the family would, thing would come in as a limiting factor, or saying that, you know, or limiting the number of documents or something, so if you wanna not have any limitation on who can rent, and it's just about how long. Then you could get three college kids potentially, that's, that, that's something that would be a likely inevitable result of the way you draft file.
I have one more question as it relates to what we're trying to conclude, so what does it mean to us as a board and what would it mean to the town if June, July, August and September, that Elm Street home gets eight thousand dollars a month? And they rented for thirty one day increments or thirty two day increments for this purpose. But each tenant's only there for seven to ten days, the week, their week vacation in South Dartmouth, are we offended by that if it's one tenant? Per thirty one days, but they're only there for a week and we realize what's happening?
I don't think that's really, I don't think we're gonna find out that unless they be, they're really bad tenants.
Agreed.
So if they're, they're paying for thirty one days and they only want to stay there seven days and they're good tenants, who cares?
Okay, I agree with that, I agree with that.
My, my concern is, I, I don't want to have a situation uh in neighborhoods that changes the neighborhoods and makes a neighbor wish that they could sell their house because they can't be there anymore because of this ADU. That's all I'm concerned about, okay?
What, what about, what about something that for the most part will inherently limit the population that you're defining, what if it said something along the lines of the family definition? And then included an age where any, any and all, any and all occupants, i.e. residents must be twenty one years of age or older if they are not related.
I don't think that's
That's, that's housing discrimination, you can't do it.
That's right, you cannot do that. That much I've learned being a realtor, you cannot do that, can't put an age limit to rent.
You, you could, you could make them all only fifty five plus or sixty two plus, those are options. But no, you can't, the reason why you can do family, because you basically, you can basically treat it as it's an extended family all living together and it's one big family unit, and so that's, that's, you can always discriminate between um unrelated persons and related persons.
Need to discriminate against your family, who can you?
Well, you could say it that way, Brian, you could say uh that they, uh you can't uh rent to any uh to three unrelated people. I mean, uh
Yes, I mean, so what, you, you, yes, you could make it clear that it's only for family units, so that like you could rent to like um some like uh two parents and a kid or a parent, two kids. Like you could do that, you could, you could make it that way so that you can't have three random unrelated people living in the same unit, you could do that, sure.
That would be the best thing, so you could, you could rent to three related people in an ADU. That way you're not saying uh, you know, college students.
But not, but not necessarily, not necessarily related to the owner of the
I think that's a good wording to put in.
Very fair.
Yes.
Does that leave enough wiggle room for a caretaker?
Yes.
Yes, because you're not renting to the ta- caretaker.
Okay.
Right, that, that would be my opinion.
Right.
Well, you gotta be careful with that because um if you look, if you, if you look into the PCA programs. Um the caretakers can be employed by the PCA. And that's why, let's just say, uh a loved one has thirty six hours of care per week and it just so happens that twenty four of those hours are night hours and that PCA is renting that, so it may be the caretaker that's the tenant, in a perfect situation for the caretaker and the homeowner, that situation could easily arise. We get the PCA program that's paying X amount of hours for the caretaker to take care of the patient slash loved one. And the best case scenario is that the caretaker is living in the house, that, and I'm talking to you firsthand in terms of family discussion about how well that could be um for someone who needs care.
Potentially, it, it could be drafted to say that, you know, um you know, um if there are if there are two people living in the unit, they can then unrelated, if there are three people, at least two of them have to be related. I mean, you could, you could tweak it, um you could also specifically carve out an exception for anyone living in the unit that's there specifically to assist anyone living in the unit. Um there's ways, there's ways you could be clear about that.
Well, I think that kind of wording has to be put in there, Brian.
Okay. By the way, Christine, obviously, are, are you making sure that um uh I, that there's notes on all of this, because I'm not gonna remember all that, I don't think.
Yes, yes, I'm good, I'm good.
So Margaret, that would go, that would go, Brian, toward uh Margaret's concern about students also.
Right.
But we might be able to um
Yes.
To eliminate quite a bit of that potential issue.
Yes, yes.
With, with this relation.
I think that, you know, I think that's the best terminology, again. My only, my only concern is, don't want to see neighborhoods changed because of this, you know. I, I want to make sure that the people who invested their money and bringing kids into these neighborhoods, you know. They feel safe and secure, and at the same ti- time, we want to help the people that need to put that accessory, uh accessory unit in there. So if we say three related people and anything else that Brian, Brian's just said, the people coming into care, I think we've covered it.
So up me, how about up to um up to two relate, now, well, a minimum of two related parties.
That's fine.
Right, two related, so, so you could, you could concede the, the issue of having uh the grandparents in this unit with a caregiver in the separate bedroom.
So, so the problem with that, the problem with that language is, if you say it like that, it precludes having it uh a single grandparent. Cause the others ceased along with the caregiver.
Ah, yes.
What you, you really, if, if it's, if it's that caregiver is literally the only thing you're worried about, just do a specific carve out for that.
Right, that's what I thought we were gonna do, yeah. That's what I thought we settled on, language about that can't take up.
That, that they are related except for that exception.
Right, except for the exception of that.
If the caretaker is gainfully employed for services rendered on site, it should make them exempt from the calculation, you know, from, from what we're defining.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that's easy to correct.
That's the wording he's gonna put in there.
Evan Mello, what do you think about that? Yeah, no, I'm, I'm going along with that. I'm going along with that, that, that's what's worked, um. So we already have that in town, does that not cover, would that not cover us on this also? Don't we already have that, that bylaw in town that no, no more than three un- unrelated blood relatives.
So what, what, what this, what this would be is a limping, even be more restrictive, saying that you have to be related, you can't have unrelated persons unless it's a character. If you're, if the idea is to rent to families, not necessarily the same extended family as the owner, but if the idea is to rent to families as opposed to it being something where, you know, people are coming in uh to crash for a long vacation with their friends or for college, so again, none of this is right or wrong, but if the idea is to make sure that it's a, a family unit living there, it can be drafted in that manner.
Right, but so then I build a unit, my daughter moves in, her, her boyfriend wants to move in. That wouldn't be allowed, he's not related.
Yes, that's correct, and again, you could, so it's always trade offs, so get more restrictive, there's gonna be examples where something might not happen that you think is fine, if you get looser you got examples of where things fall through the cracks that you didn't want, and there's no right or wrong answer, I can only um I can only draft what you guys eventually decide is the trade off that you're most comfortable.
Okay, so we need some more time on that one.
Well, the, the problem is, Chris, we don't really have the time.
Well, we've got until the next meeting on it at least.
Right, right. Um could we, could we say that um define them as tenant, the tenant must be my, you know, so obviously, let's use my situation, my daughter's living here, her boyfriend moves in. Her boyfriend's not my tenant, they break up, he's gotta go because she's my tenant. Would, would that be a way, a workaround for that?
So, so the problem is, is I don't, I, I don't want to get into the intricacies of whether or not someone can make a claim of a tenancy, even though they don't have a lease. So you're, you're kind of, you're, you are banking on what would or would not happen in housing.
Okay. Okay.
Next action, Christine.
Um so the next one was another um question, it was in the site plan review section, but we're not gonna have that, right? So uh it talked to driveways and curb cuts. Moving that, um. Let's see here.
Utilities.
Yeah, how did you guys want to handle utilities? Uh do, do you care, do you want to require them to be separate, require them to be all in one account? There's no right or wrong answer, but if you have a preference, again, I think you should state it.
I think, I agree, I, I think separate would be great, um you know, like because even, even the homeowner could, could they, could pay both bills combined.
I think by, I think by them being separate, it makes it easier, but more palatable for a homeowner to make an exception, and I, I I think exactly the opposite, I think if it's an accessory dwelling unit to the primary dwelling and the use is gonna be consistent with what we're saying, and we want to mitigate short term rentals in A, B and C, you keep the utilities together. So the burden is on the homeowner, which will make them think twice about others and their consumption and their use. That, that, I, I think that's a control, I mean, I'm okay if we go separate, but I think we need to understand, if we separate the utilities we just gave up some control that would have been working in our favor for everything we've been discussing tonight.
Well, also, we want to keep it, we want to keep these ADUs. If, if we do have, uh if we do have a, a separate three people that are related, but not related to the homeowner, we want to be able that they can afford it and uh you don't want to see arguments over how much uh heat that they're using.
Let me give you one example. Let me give you one example of a water bill.
No, I, I don't disagree, I, I all, all, I, I'm all for it. I mean, I understand why, I clearly understand why separate is better for most. And even on it, but I think we need to just accept the fact that by agreeing to go separate we are employing perhaps another vehicle that will promote a lot of the things that we hope not to be promoted. That's all, I'm okay with it being separate, it's cleaner for down the road, because down the road, this whole story is gonna change in ten years, and it's gonna be better if they're separate for everybody.
Couldn't we just let the um, the situation sort itself out, you know, my neighbor put on um a unit last, within the last couple of years, and it, it, it is part of her electricity, um because she didn't want to have to dig up the street to bring in another service. So if we say you must have a separate one, now you're adding a cost, so in that situation, it would be included. Where someone else may say, oh no, it's easy enough to put a separate electric meter on the side of the house and bring the, the service in. Would we, why do we really have to dictate it, let, let the circumstance dictate?
There's no, there's no requirement to dictate it, but if you have a preference, my only uh observation is that it should be in the bylaw, there is no preference, that's fine.
Well, I don't care.
That might be, that might be one area for the building department, Christine, to step in and give us a recommendation. I do have one example, though, to go back to the apartment, hadn't insured uh multiple units. One particular unit, the water bill was astronomical, she was running a laundromat out of this unit. Thousands and thousands of dollars.
That's a separate, that's a separate zoning enforcement issue.
Trying not to say brilliant, but I couldn't hold back, brilliant.
Yeah, so let, let's um, we, we can, I, I want to try and move this part of it, I, I know that we've got the, the first coming up and we have others waiting and I want to try and get them in and out. So.
Were there any, any more of my comments, Christine, or is that it?
That was, that was it, um.
Okay.
The other, yeah, so you're all set, I will get you uh the notes tomorrow.
Okay, thank you guys, I, I apologize that I'm, I was going from one meeting to another.
Um, no problem, Brian, thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian.
Appreciate the uh patience with me on the phone, okay?
Thank you.
Um Christine, we're still in the uh, the public hearing, correct?
You are still in the public hearing, yes, so I was gonna just say to you that the next four amendments to the articles were the summary articles that we've talked about a couple of times, Brian's given me some uh minor feedback with regard to uh some things that we should probably just include like references to the um to the existing main article in the, in the uh bylaw and things like that, so you'll also get those comments next week, uh but nothing.
Nothing, nothing earth shattering on, on any of those?
Nope, nothing at all, um so if you want to now uh continue the public hearing till next time, I guess that would be the best way to handle it, or if you want to close it outright and then open a public hearing again at that special meeting.
So, so the only comment I'll make is uh the request for any public informa- uh any person in the public looking to make comment on this particular section of the public hearing. They can speak now, if not, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing and reopen at the time of next meeting.
Uh let's see, motion by Nick Sekpeta, seconded by Kevin Mello, was that you?
Yes, to continue to the next meeting.
Nick?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Ira Sweet?
Yes.
Evan Estes?
Yes.
Sonya is yes, uh we now return to the regular meeting, administrative items, uh under that is number one. Approval not required plan, uh P A N uh twenty four dash four forty seven Spring Street, assessors map one sixty five lot sixty two, Christine.
So this one is pretty straightforward, this is a merger um of two lots, uh sixty two, lot two and lot lot seventy three, I'm sorry, um the uh lot sixty two has the frontage and has the address of forty seven Spring Street. So we are um assuming that the assessor, the assessor's department will um continue with that same uh configuration, we will let everybody know if something different happens, um. This, this is pretty straightforward, I'm not sure if the, the person that I see on here, that is, is here to speak to this particular item or not. Um I do not see an engineer or surveyor. Um, I do not see an engineer or surveyor that I would know would be associated with this.
No.
I don't have any, I don't have any hands raised. There's no reason why you can't, um, why this isn't eligible for endorsement.
Yeah, this looks pretty straightforward. Any questions or concerns from the members?
Um, just the general question, not, not really on A and R's, um, not exclusive to this. Two full surveys have to be done on each lot. That are part of the A and R. So was this a site survey?
So we don't always see mergers. Sometimes they go in through eighty one Xs or some of the other things. But yes, the survey has to be done in order for the parcels to be changed or manipulated in some way.
Okay, so even this is a merger, but um, which could have been done with the eighty one X, but if it was a sub, if they were making two separate lots, you would require.
The whole, the survey of the police, yes, because sometimes we have to look at the contiguous, sometime the contiguous upland, um, all of those different things that have to come in. But yes, I would require that a full survey be done.
Okay, thank you.
I think sometimes in the case of mergers, um, people do bring them forward. It is a little bit cleaner than an eighty one X a lot of times, so that's why I'm in favor of doing the mergers this way as well.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve this A and R.
Uh, motion approved by Kevin Mello. Is there a second? Second by Nick Psychopatis. Uh, Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Nick Psychopatis?
Yes.
Evan Estes?
Yes.
Iver Sweet?
Yes.
And Personalis, yes. Uh, we have. Uh, under administrative items, uh, gender item number two, site plan review, PSR twenty four dash four. Uh, those numbers are the same, Christine. Nope, PSR, uh, P S P R twenty four dash four, three twenty nine. State Road Assessor's Map one sixty seven lot forty two.
Um, this one is the former Papagino's site. We do have the owner of the property um on to discuss this um as as well. This comes before you as um site plan review. So whenever you see the, um, just so you know, when you see the uh application things, P is always because planning and then we site plan review. Um, we had this because we had conflicts with some of the other departments, so I put the P in front of all of ours. That's where that comes from. Um, this is proposed to be a um, uh, Mexican grill style restaurant. Uh, site plan review, one of the main reasons is because it's a discontinued use for two or more years. Um, it's been vacant, basically. Uh, the plans that were uploaded were, um, were provided to the um owner by the planning department um, from the original construction in the nineteen eighties of the Papagino's um uh, restaurant at the time. Um, we did come across a a zoning board of appeals decision that was granted in nineteen eighty four for the construction of the Papagino's. Um, and at the time that, that um decision involved a merger, which did not happen. Um, or we have no record of ever happening. Um, and this was also during the older um lot configuration or the lot numbering. Assignments from the assessor's board at the time, so that's why you see lot thirty eight is the old number, the new number is lot forty two. Your packets included a, a copy of the decision of the pack um from the ZBA. Um, I think that um, we probably shouldn't ask just a couple of questions of the owner. He is not proposing any work really on the outside of the um, of the establishment. Most of the work will be inside. Uh, the access to the site is gained by going through the other property, the abutting property. And then approximately half of the, of the parking spaces in this particular case um are also on the other property. Uh, the um, as far as for the outside of the, of the um establishment that's proposed, um, I just want to make sure that there are a couple of agreements in, in that there are agreements or easements in place um, between the two property owners, um, because again, it is a little bit different um, configuration than we were initially thinking. Um, and I know that we're going to, uh, the owner of the property is proposing to do some, you know, landscaping cleanup and some pavement updates and things like that. Um, the GPW what was able to confirm based on the plans that we had, that there is a grease trap on the property, which is um um, large enough to handle the, the proposed resident, I mean, the proposed restaurant. Uh, the other thing that was brought to our attention is the um location of the dumpster corrals and things like that as part of um, the Board of Health review. Those are on the Papagino's site. Which is a good thing. Um, so I don't know if Mr. Panagakis is on, and he wants to give you some additional information here. We can hear you.
I actually uploaded additional plans that uh, we had not accepted engineer uh, to uh and uh, to the portal, but it, it's basically the same plan that uh, that you have, just a fresh copy. Um, the address, the address isn't going to change, the parking isn't going to change. We're just going to uh, reseal, re-strike parking area, uh, fresh landscape area, so it's uh, is what was there, past some of the plants certainly have died and gone. Um, the footprint is uh, what it is, nothing's changed. The exterior, the dumpster pad is where it is, uh, that's not changing. Comment from the Board of Health on the dumpster pad was, you know, now there's a uh, a recycled dumpster that's required, so uh, with the smaller dumpsters that they will fit in there, they'll probably have to uh, have the uh, your trash collecting instead of like, you know, three times a week, maybe four times a week. Um, the tenant is fine with that. Um, so that should comply. The uh, parking, there was the deeded rights that we have on the abutting property. Um, it's, you know, it's part of the deed, it's a deed of rights to the property. Um, it's been that way for, I think about forty five years. Um, we'll continue on. Um, I think that's, that's about the guts of it. All the work will be done on the inside. There's not a whole lot of work being done, uh, cleaning it up and um, putting a little bit more equipment in to meet the needs. But that's all being filed with the uh, with the building department and the uh, and the Board of Health uh, for the food use. Um, other than that, I'm, I'm not sure there's much else I can add to it. Pylon sign is going to remain where it is. There's no changes to that, other than a change of the name. Um, that'll be permanent to the building department. Electric is the same, uh, other than that, uh, very much the same.
Go ahead, Christine.
The thing I was concerned about was the deed and right, so you do have, um, that is what's recorded at the registry of deeds. Okay, yeah.
And, and I, I think way back when, I'm trying to remember, it's been a while, but I think the uh, the variance was issued, I think the uh, variance was for the uh, side yard variance, if I, if I recall. Been a while. Um, and of course, the footprint exists where it is, so. I'm happy to answer any other question.
Uh, Christine, do we have the um, a copy of the uh, the deed?
I, I do not have a copy of the deed.
Mike, can you, can you get uh, the planning office a copy of the um, uh, the allowance on those lots at the uh, what is that, the southern side?
Uh, it's actually, I think it's actually on the uh, on the west side. Um, some of the parking is on the abutting property. The, the history of this deal was that, you know, I own the property, I bought the property in the front, uh, gentleman by the name Maholen owned the property to the rear. Uh, he and I uh, originally formed a partnership. He had the sewer line. We needed additional parking, uh. We did a partnership agreement, uh, we brought in um, Papagino's uh, for they, for by allowing him into the joint ownership of the property. We got to utilize uh, some of the property on his, on the property that he had, as well as the sewer line, and uh, that was all incorporated into the deed.
Is that in the form of an easement or?
Uh, no, it's a deed and right. Um, and, and frankly, that partnership went on for about forty years. He passed on, and I was, his wife was my partner for a decade after that. Um, and then uh, we finally brought her out, and uh, which is why, you know, we're returning the property.
Okay, and um, what about um, what about the merger of the lots? Do you, do you have any history on those?
Top of my head, I did not. Uh, you know, if it was required, I'm sure we did it. You know, way back then, the uh, the engineer who did the work for uh, the Papagino's was Manny Garcia, um, you know, what he would, you know, you know, get the dot the eye cross of the guy, so I'm sure it was done.
Okay, any other questions from the other board members?
No questions from me.
Nice addition to the town. They've got seven other locations. Uh, we're doing this with them and uh, probably three other locations. Um, it's a family run operation. Um, you know, I think, I think towns would be happy with it.
What, what about the number of seats, Mike? Are we expanding on those?
No, actually, we're reducing it. It's gonna be uh, it, it's bouncing back between seventy two and seventy five. Uh, but it appears it's gonna be seventy two, but that, that'll be determined uh, between the uh, you know, with the uh, filing of the building permit with the uh, zoning enforcement officer, so it's going to comply. But you know, that, they'd like to see the seventy two. And, and frankly, um, you know, sixty five percent of their business, I think, is probably going to be takeout. So uh, seating isn't a big component. They're, they're very similar to um, the Chipotle. Um, who's, you know, was also my tenant in town, and you know, the Chipotle breakdown is about sixty five, thirty five. So they're direct, so it's not really, it's not a waitress full sit down restaurant. It's uh, your concept is very similar to Chipotle, uh, with a little variation in the food.
Okay, um. All right.
So Mr. Panagakis, um, it with the uh, the narrative that was provided or the comments that were provided that um, he's going to basically bring the site back to uh, to the existing, or the, to the proposed condition at the time. So the parking spaces are, were slightly smaller than what we require now. They were nine by eighteen, now we require ten by twenty. Um, he also needs to, he will also need to have um, two handicap spaces which um, the uh, building department will make sure that has, that that has, happens. Um, there are sixteen, sixteen spots on the um, on the site now, and then the remainder of them are offsite. Um, this is something I am comfortable with handling. If I can get a copy of the deed from the registry, which I should be able to do, so if you want to handle that, and me to handle that administratively, I can, or you can.
So how do you handle the um, uh, the parking, Mike, if you have to go over? Um, is there a side, a side agreement with the um, with the abutting?
It, 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 it doesn't really go over. What happens is if you look at the driveway end, uh, the, the parking that's um, on the abutting property is actually to the left of the driveway end. So it's incorporated within the site itself. Um, so it, it's a little bizarre. So the parking is right up against the entrance driveway to the, to the plaza.
Right.
So, so the Plaza property actually is more than just the driveway. It, it extends to, you know, another, I think, fifteen or eighteen feet into the parking, into what it looks like just our parking area, because it is just our parking area. So although it appears that it's offsite parking, it isn't, it's onsite parking. It's just that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we've just taken the, you know, some of the property was on my partner's property, and we've just, you know, added it to the uh, to the Papagino's property.
Okay. All right, so, so then Christine, really the biggest concern is, is the access uh, that we have on this, this older plan into the main plaza, right? Um, and the deeded rights we have available there.
So coming off of State Road, the access coming off of State Road, and that, those first eleven spots over to the left hand side are on the other property. So, I mean, if, if the deed has the rights within it, then that solves, that solves the problem. In the back, in the back of the Papagino's property, there is access out into the other aisles of the other, of the other ownership too, I mean, or the other site. Um, but.
So, so my, my only concern there would be, say, say this um, uh, the, the new plaza has a problem with that access, and they, you know, they throw up the concrete barriers on you, but, you know.
Well, we have a deed, we have the deed across seasons.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, and, and I think there's, I think altogether, when you add the parking that's on the, the um, the deed of right that we have next door, I think altogether, I think we have about thirty six or thirty eight parking spots uh, on, on the Papagino's property itself. Um, you know, much more than we would ever need.
Yeah.
Oh, I was just gonna ask if Christine can handle this administratively. If Mike produces the deed, at that point in time, are we all content?
Uh, I'm prepared to make that motion. Christine's already said that she is comfortable with that.
Mm-hmm. I'm, I'm all set with that.
Yeah, my, my comment is that I, I remember the Papagino's. I remember going there uh, through high school and college and uh, I don't recall ever having a problem there. As long as we've got uh, access, uh, and they can't shut you down, then um, I think you're in good shape there. And you know what, in, in twenty twenty four, I think the um, I think the takeout is uh, is much more prevalent at this point anyway, so.
I, I also remember driving by that about a million times, seeing an empty building there. So I'll be happy to see something productive there.
Yeah, you know, we would have, we would have tended to prior, but you know, the um, my, my partner's wife who became my partner when he passed away, um, was just kind of unrealistic. So there was never anything we could get done. Um, so, but you know, like, you know, we bought her out. I think we were able to buy her about eight months ago, so we're able to uh, bringing the right tenants for us. It'll be, it'll be a nice use for the property, and um, you're right, I mean, no one benefits out of an empty building. Uh, the property owner or any of the tenant or the town.
I will say that I had occasion to meet these uh, people, uh, nothing to do with this deal, but they had called me and I had met them on one of the sites that I represented, and they are a family oriented restaurant. Wife, the children, they all came and looked at the property.
That's, that's what, and, and they all, and frankly, Margaret, they said, I said, oh, I know Margaret, we're friends. She goes, yeah, she was nice to us.
I was nice to them, because they were nice people, nice people.
You know, I, I'm going to tell you, we had another use for the property for uh, similar use, but different, for more money. Um, and um, I made the deal with them for the reasons that you just said. They were nice people, they were family. Um, they were great, they were great guys. So I was like, okay.
Wives, and the wives and the sisters, they all work in that restaurant.
That's right. Yep, yep. That's um, and you know, it, and it's interesting, because out of the seven locations they have, um, you know, they, they build them one at a time, um, and it's uh, all, you know, out of profits. Uh, so they're, you know, they're well established and uh, and well capitalized, which is great.
Oh, sorry.
There, there's no drive through being contemplated, is that?
No, no, not to other, no.
Okay, and Christine, is that, if that were to be added, we would get a site plan review on that, right?
Yes. Yeah. You, you can't fit a, you can't fit a. That would, that would never work.
No, I just wanted to make sure that if that were, and not, not specifically, not specific to this case, just generally. If that were added, we would get a, a look at it.
Well, if they try to add something, I see all of the building permits at this point, so um.
Okay. What is your?
I make a motion that we approve the A and R. Uh, we endorse it as presented before us, providing that Christine receives the defined deed um, that we discussed administratively.
I second that.
Motion made by Nick Psychopatis, seconded. Motion made by Nick Psychopatis, seconded by Kevin Mello. Nick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Kevin, Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
And Chris O'Neil, yes. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Have a great night.
To Kevin Mello's point, thank God, there's gonna be something there, because Chris, like you said, all those years growing up, stopping in there, filled with teenagers and students, thriving, right? Full life, and then to see it empty.
It'd be empty a long time.
I know.
And I'm glad, you know, we, we can't have empty buildings in the town, especially along Route Six.
There seems to be a lot of interest in, in State Road or Route Six right now. You'll be seeing a couple of different, over the next few months, which is there is a lot of vacancies. I agree.
Yes.
Okay, item number, administrative item number three. Christine, four thirty-nine State Road, assesses map one sixty-six, lot one thirty-seven.
So I had heard, I had got a request from the attorney for this particular one. They requested a continuance until the twenty-fifth, March twenty-fifth, the next meeting.
Okay. No motion required?
I would make a motion to continue it for their request.
I make a motion that we continue it. Go ahead, Kevin.
I make a motion, we continue this to March twenty-fifth, based on the applicant's request.
I'm using my fastball. Kevin, motion made by Kevin Mello, seconded by?
I second.
Seconded by Nick Psychopatis. Kevin?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
I'm not voting on this.
Margaret abstains, and it's Chris O'Neil, yes. Let's see, administrative item number four, minutes. Any questions or concerns on the minutes? Anything on those, Christine?
I do not have anything on those. I did just miss on the Papa Gino's. Who gave the second on that one? I'm sorry. I had Nick, he, he made the motion. And then who seconded?
Kevin Mello seconded.
You guys got opposite, okay. So I was confused. No, so with the minutes, they're pretty straightforward. I didn't have anything with regard to that.
Okay, motion accepted. File will be accepted. Anyone?
Still moved.
Moved by Margaret Sweet, second.
Second.
Second by Nick. Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Psychopatis?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Chris O'Neil is, yes. Correspondents, City Fall River, Town of Freetown, Bedford, Westport. Any questions, concerns? If not, I'll accept the motion.
Motion filed and accept.
Motion accepted. Filed by Kevin Estes, second.
Second.
Second by Nick Psychopatis. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Psychopatis?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
And Chris O'Neil is, yes. Number six, for your information, new business, Christine?
The CBA, we do not have any, any decisions or legal ads or anything. They had a continuance at their last meeting for an extension, and that was it.
Any subcommittee reports?
None.
None.
I'm meeting tomorrow night.
Margaret has a meeting tomorrow, and the only thing that I'll bring up on the Serphead meeting from February twenty-eighth is Kevin Ham's work with the, let's see, I, I didn't write down the labeling of it, but I, I think I brought this up before, but they added a little bit of, a little bit of work to this, this grant, or this program that Serphead offers for town buildings. If you recall, it was a schematic of, you, you, basically what you would do is you would pay Serphead to come in. Kevin Ham would do a, an assessment of whatever buildings you want included in the report. They would do similar to what the, the real estate professionals do with the video inside the buildings, circle on the floor, click to that point, shows you the room, turn left, turn right. And they basically do that throughout the whole of the buildings that you request. They've added, at this point, a roof plan for, say, the fire department. So let's use the high school as an example. If we were able to get Serphead to do this for the town, which I think I'm gonna press for. It is, they would basically take the school, if we just did the high school, say, they would label the doors, make sure that those are labeled properly, and those are clockwise for all fire and police. They would look at the hydrants. I guess what's happened in the past in some towns is that they know, the fire department knows where the hydrants are outside of the property, but when they get inside the property to the back of the building, it's, you know, covered by brush. They're not maintained. If it's snowing, they're covered, so they have no idea where those plugs are. And even cars can block them sometimes. So it, this, this mapping software would include all the hydrants within the property itself. It's a three-D rendering, I guess, of the, of the interior, which it covered. They would do, I said, the door labeling, the roof plan. And they would make that accessible to the police department, so they could bring it up on their screens. Since the police now are looking at software for, new software for the department, we may be able to incorporate that when they pull into, say, the parking lot of the high school. If there's a report of an issue, say, at door number thirty-two, we know exactly where door number thirty-two is. And we're not wasting time sitting in front of the administration building, trying to figure out what's going on. They already tie into the video systems, but this would include tie-ins, what cameras, where they are, what they're pointing to. So if someone said, we have a problem in the, in the library. We've got new offices coming on. They don't know where the library is. They haven't had a chance to look. They could bring it up on the screen. They can see where the library is through the camera angle. They would know through the three-D rendering what that, what that particular area looks like, where the stacks are. And just an incredible use of technology for these particular buildings in, in towns. One other thing that, that they did use it, which I, I doubt will, we could get done this year or next, but they did in Rutland, Mass. They did a lost, they, they took three people and they said, go out in the woods, and go way out there. In Rutland, if you've been there, you know there's plenty of woods to hide in. And they incorporated like three or four towns, I believe it was, had them come in, and just coordinated how to do a professional fast search. They didn't, they didn't include drones, because it was too much for Kevin, he said, to handle. There was so many people involved in this that the drone use was just a level of complexity that he wouldn't have been able to handle. But they can do that. They can include drone use by the local police department, when they have to draw in from other communities for a search. And we've had a couple of those in the town just in the last year, where we've had to search elderly or confuse people. You know, it would kind of get them all on the same page very, very quickly. In the winter, as you know, it's, time is of the essence, especially. So I, I think this is, this is something unfortunately that all towns should be looking at. I think Serphead has done an incredible job kind of honing this product and reducing the value, the, the cost of it, not the value. They've increased the value, but reduced the cost. So it's really something that I'd like to see the town at least take a real hard look at. Because of, you know, the craziness that's going on in the world, I think it's especially for the police use, it would be very, very valuable if, God forbid, we were to have a situation in, in one of our schools. It'd be a handy thing to have for, for first responders, and also for the fire department, to label where the axes are, to label where the doors are, how, how to gain access to different areas of the building. So that was, it was more of an update, really, on what the, what their capabilities are. And I think that's something that's, that unfortunately is something that we really need to, to look at. And the oppa update, there are, there are some towns that have really drawn down their oppa funding for transportation. There are, there are some oppa funds that we have available to us in Dartmouth that I'm, I'm hoping that we can draw down a little bit faster. We, I guess, through the end of June, we're supposed to have these funds taken down. I, the last update that Bristol County had was a twelve thirty, I'm sorry, was it twelve thirty-one? Yeah, it was a twelve thirty-one update. So we're a couple of months past that now, so I've got to get an update from Bristol County as to where the town is as far as oppa funding. And then I can kind of, you know, review that with everybody and, and give you kind of an update. But we were only, as of December thirty-first, we were only at a fifteen percent drawdown on the available funds that are over five million dollars. So some of the towns have, have drawn down a hundred percent already. So that's, that's a concern that we can hopefully get some information. Actually, we might be able to get some information from DPW on that also, Christine.
Okay.
And that, Chris, why, why, do you know why we're not drawing that down? Or is it lack of knowledge? Is it lack of awareness? From, from the meetings that I've watched, we've, we've got the, the, the grant writing process is, is a little bit, is cumbersome. It's, it's on a federal procurement basis, so I'm not sure if everybody knew how to do that. So there was an issue brought up at one of the DPW meetings, I'm sorry, one of the select board meetings about that. So that's been an issue. We've had a couple of applications through downtown departments submitted to Bristol County and then returned, as you recall. Bristol County, they used all the counties to kind of funnel that money out to their, their, their towns within their, within their borders. So that is something that that we can, you know, look at and try and figure out. Number one, let's get an update, find out if we're past fifteen percent. Number two, what do we need to do to draw that down? Because we don't want to leave any money, not a dollar, on the table for the end of June. Yeah, so we'll be, be asking some of those questions over the next month. That's essentially it on the, on my subcommittee reports. Anybody else? No? Okay, Christine, plan this?
So I was just gonna tell you that the, we had another technical reviewer meeting on March fifth. We had one private homeowner that came in. We don't usually see those type of things at technical reviewer meetings. But they were looking, obviously, it's a, it's a property with, with a few issues on it, and the feedback ended up being really good. The other thing that we had was there was a proposal still in the pretty early stages for two ninety-two, two ninety-four Elm Street. That's a commercial establishment that's been vacant for a little while, and then it's got the four cottages before it, behind it. Part of the concern here is that they had moved ahead with building permits and things like that. The use was still not clear, so that's why it wasn't coming for site plan review initially. We decided to go at it with, with a phased approach in this particular case, because they're having trouble leasing some of the properties. So the, the owner of the property, and working with his architect, had come forward for the first stage of it. So now we have a better handle on kind of what they're trying to do. It's a wonderful proposal. Well, at some point, it'll come before all of you for site plan review, but until then, we are just monitoring it and moving, helping them move ahead so that they can get it rented or leased.
Yeah, that, that was the initial, I think, the technical review. I was involved in the initial one. Wasn't I, Christine?
You did get in for one of the initial ones on that one, right? And then they kind of went away. They kind of went away for a while, and now they've kind of come back. And now the owner himself is involved as well.
Yeah, one, one, one point on the initial meeting, and then the plans that we've seen through the technical review process for that particular location, which is really which is very visual for, for Padenaram anyway, is that initially there was some hesitation, I felt anyway, from the architect to kind of lay out what the overall plan looked like, because I, I don't know, I, I get a sense, not just from, from them, but from others, that they don't want to show you too much, because they don't want to get too mired down with the process in, in, in town. But, but hopefully, through our discussion, we were able to kind of loosen things up a little bit, in, in, involve us a little bit more. So it's good to hear that, the technical review, that they came back again, because from what I've seen, it, it's, it's a huge bump for that area. The use of the, the existing structures, I, I think are gonna be great. The use of that building is gonna be terrific. The work that they're doing on the, on the exterior right now is really, really helpful for the neighbors down in that area, so it's gonna kind of buoy all boats when, when it's all said and done. But I think just the, the fact that we've got a, a planning board that is willing to listen, to offer suggestions, not impediments, is, has, has been a good thing in, in that particular application. So Christine did a good job on that.
Thank you. Yes, the, the owner was very, very receptive, and I think, to be very honest with you, with all of you, the, the perception of the board has changed dramatically. You know, people are kind of coming forward, and, you know, we're seeing more and more things, which maybe were kind of sidestepped in the past. So I think your willingness to work with everybody has proven to be really effective. And there are mostly, mostly what we're seeing right now are commercial projects, so it's good. It's good for the town, reuse. I mean, I love to see the reuse of all of the vacant, you know, the vacant establishments and the updates.
Yeah, I had, I had a discussion the other day with a developer from Rhode Island, and they were inquiring about the mixed use on Fontz Kana, where some of the, the older retail spaces, and, and kind of some of the original retail space on Route Six also, in their desire to really take, have, have the town as a whole take a, kind of a hard look at some of those properties for garden-style apartments, where we, we have some infrastructure. We have some capacity in schools, it looks like. And we've got some, you know, we've, we've got some underutilized space. So, you know, it was, it was interesting to hear what's actually happening out there on, on the retail side. I think everybody saw the the information that came out of Macy's. We were fortunate enough to, to keep that space.
Right.
Thank God. But you just never know, you know? You never know what's gonna happen in that retail space. So we've got to be nimble enough to be able to react and to kind of stay ahead of it if we, if we can in order to head off some problems, if, if things take a, take a turn for the worse.
But if you go, if you go down south, they mix use a lot, retail and residential.
Yeah.
They really do, and it seems to work well.
Yeah, New Bedford's really really stepped up for that, for garden use, apartment, garden-style apartments, with retail underneath, and so it's yeah, there, there's a spot for it, for sure.
I think so. Well, it's back to the original, you know, that, that's the way things used to be, like, the, where people did more of their shopping and more of their things in their, in their neighborhoods, right where they lived. That definitely is the trend now with the younger generations, too. I know I'm moving, moving my son down in DC. He's moving this weekend, and he's moving to something similar. He, he was moving from a residential place, you know, now to a place with a, with a mixed-use thing. I mean, and that's definitely what they're, they're looking at.
Yeah.
So.
Wait long enough, everything comes back.
Comes around.
So that, that's all I have.
I don't know about those bell-bottom jeans, though. That's kind of, yeah, a while.
You're drawing, you're drawing the line there, huh?
Yeah. That is it for me. Anybody else have anything?
So our next meeting will be the twenty-fifth, and then we will schedule a special meeting just for the the public hearing for the Articles for Town meeting. We've got a total of five, and that'll be the following Monday on April first.
Yeah, thank you for, for the time on that, too, because you know, it, it took us a while to get the, the comments back, but, and, and it was a little bit too close to tonight's meeting, but the, the fact that you guys were willing to go through it was great. um, was great, uh, because I, I think it kind of sussed out some of the, some of the bigger issues, um, when it comes to the ADUs at least. So, uh, hopefully with some input from the building department over the next, uh, week or two, uh, we'll be able to hone that down a little bit and, and get a final product that we're all happy with.
And if anybody thinks of anything else related to any of this, as you read through it again, um, the notes from Brian, if you want to, uh, reach out to me, I can then distribute it to the group, um, appropriately.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Yep. All right. All entertained. I make the motion. And I'll second that. All right, uh, motion to adjourn by Margaret Sweet, uh, seconded by Kevin Mello. Uh, Margaret?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Psychopatis?
Yes.
Chris O'Neil is yes. Thank you.
Guys.
All right, thank you.
Good night, everyone.